Oh, that's funny. Okay, council, it is seven o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up next, we have roll call.
And I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, one more needs to push it a little bit harder. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All councilors present, an acorn has been declared.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Carson.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Henley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we have those who've turned in comment cards already come and make comments at the podium. We do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, which it is timed right over there, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, I have one comment card. Ms. Rachel Chesslock?
Hello and good evening, councilors. I am here from Adam State University, but I am really representing the Rural CoAction Grant Team tonight. And I have been here before you talking about some of our partnerships. Adam State University, Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley, and Action Lab 360 have all partnered up to do career readiness learning. One of our projects is offering internships, and the Boys and Girls Club through this grant work was able to partner with the Alamosa Fire Department, who you're going to get to hear from later, a little bit about some of this programming. But what I wanted to do tonight was talk to you guys a little bit about our Innovation and Entrepreneurship Fair. Once a year, we invite all of our school districts to come and share school business projects, to share individual or small group student entrepreneurial projects, in which students are trying to learn how to be entrepreneurs and start business and money-making endeavors of their own, or students who might just be doing innovation projects. So just showing innovation, creativity, giving back to their communities. And we do this every year through a large fair at Adam State University. This year, it is happening on May 1st. And I just would strongly encourage all of you councilors, if you can, to drop by and come. And I will make a shameless plug, not only to invite you, but invite you to recruit other people to come. We are looking for judges to help view the projects, especially the small group and individual entrepreneurial projects, and the individual and small group innovation projects. So I do have a flyer here. You can just use the QR codes to register your interest in being a judge. Please feel free to share them with your friends and colleagues in many businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So that's the only comment card I have. So what we're going to do is go to the participants who are on Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, if you could give them instructions of how they can raise their hand and be recognized to make comments, if they're on Zoom, I should appreciate it.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this comment session, uh, segment, and go to the next item on the agenda. And we have ceremonial items. We have proclamations. Tonight, we're going to have three of those proclamations. And what we do here in Alamosa City Council, instead of just having me read the proclamations, we work together as a team, and we share the proclamation so that each council member gets an opportunity to, to read a proclamation. And tonight, we have two of our newer councilor members get an opportunity to read a proclamation for the first time. So the first proclamation is International Dark Sky Week. And I believe that one is by Counselor Dominguez. There you go. And if we have anyone here from International Dark Sky who would like to come up here and stand, let me know. We can come up here. No one? Okay, but if you can go ahead.
All right, International Dark Sky Week, April 2nd to 8th, 2024. Whereas the San Luis Valley region is treasured by residents and visitors alike for having some of the darkest night skies in the United States. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a dark sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, and may encourage interest in science and nature. And whereas the San Luis Valley Great Outdoors and partners in the Sangre de Cristo Dark Sky Coalition are working to educate the community about light pollution and to apply the Dark Sky International for the status of International Dark Sky Reserve. And whereas the solutions can be as easy as using light only where you need it, when you need it, with the minimum amount of light needed, with appropriate color temperature while shielding lights and directing light downward. And whereas education about night sky helps our community improve, maintain its unique rural character, neighborhood livability, safety, and quality of life. And now therefore, be it resolved that I...
You could just say your name.
Jamie Dominguez. And on behalf of the entire, entire city council proclaim April 2nd to the 8th, 2024 as International Dark Sky Week. In the, in the city of Alamosa, during this week, I encourage all residents to learn about the benefits of the night sky to our community, adopted this third day of April 2024.
Do we have anyone in the audience right now with the dark skies who can come down and take a picture with you? Okay? I don't see anyone. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so very much. Thank you. Okay? Up next, the next proclamation is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And, um... I'll read that one. "In the city of Alamosa, Colorado, in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, SAM, S-A-M, we call attention to the fact that sexual assault violence is widespread and impacts every person in every community. SAM aims to raise public awareness about sexual abuse, harassment, and assault, and educate communities about how to be involved in prevention. This year's SAM campaign theme, Building Connected Communities, calls on each of us to work together to prevent sexual abuse, harassment, and assault. We believe when everyone... We believe when anyone experiences sexual violence, every community member is affected. We must strive to build more connected, respectful, and inclusive communities to promote our collective well-being and protect against the risk of sexual violence. We believe all of us, our communities, will be safer and stronger by making them more equitable for people of all gender identities and sexual orientations, races, and ethnic backgrounds, ages, faith, and abilities. Whereas over 53% of women and over 29% of men reported experiencing contact sexual violence in their lifetime. Whereas most men and women across all sexual identities who have experienced connected sexual violence reported that the person who harmed them was someone they knew. And whereas, as such, we must strive to create strong connected communities that take care of one another and make decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of others to end sexual violence. And whereas, the Building Connected Communities campaign is an opportunity for our community to join with others around the world in committing to prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. We encourage our community to take action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Alamosa, adopted this third day of April 2024." Hey, I'm quite sure I have some people here who are here for the proclamation. Did you all want to say anything at the podium before we come down and present this to you? Okay? And we're going to ask you that you speak into the microphone so the people on Zoom can hear you, okay?
Is it on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for having us here today. I just wanted to put in a couple plugs for some events that Two Casa Inc. has throughout the month of April for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We are partnering with TSJC and ASU, and we'll be having a couple Chalk the Walk events, where we will be on campus, using sidewalk chalk, writing some supportive messages for survivors, some statistics, and some other educational information regarding sexual assault. We also are having a Lunch and Learn event, which is free and open to the community on April 18th at Behavioral Health at 12:00 PM, where we'll be talking about our Clothesline Project, which is a national project dedicated to survivors of sexual assault and their loved ones, just to bring some awareness to our community as well. We're actually going to have people make new pieces for our Clothesline display, so we'd love to have you guys there. And then you can catch our display a couple places around town at SLV Health. There's one at ASU, and there's one at TSJC as well.
Okay. Thank you. We'll come down and present this to you, okay? All right. Okay. The next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Councilmember Jackie Vehill is going to read that proclamation.
Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 1st, 2024. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2022, nearly 3.1 million children received either an investigation response or alternative response. And whereas child abuse neglect is a serious probably, problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the state or jurisdiction. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children's, children and families. Now therefore, city council... City of Alamosa do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Alamosa, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
All right, thank you. And, and I'm quite sure we have caution again, if you all can come up and if you'd like to say a few words, and we'll come back down and present this to you.
Great. So, I just want to start by saying... Turn it off. I did. There I am. So, again, just saying thank you as always to the city of Alamosa for supporting Two Casa Inc. and our services. We do house the Children's Advocacy Center Program of the San Luis Valley. We've been actually doing it for 11 years. We dropped the ball last year and didn't celebrate our 10-year anniversary, but it's been a really amazing journey, and a lot of that wouldn't be without the support of our city council, without our community, without our partners in law enforcement or child welfare. And we, I wear blue today for that purpose. Friday is actually wear blue day, so we hope that any of you who are willing to show that support for children and keeping them safe, that you'd be willing to wear blue. Feel free to share it with us on social media. Two Casa Inc. has a Facebook page and an Instagram page, and we'd love to see your blue. It just, again, this month is a busy month for us, but it's really important for us to make sure that, like the proclamation said, we protect our, our greatest assets, our greatest resource, which are our children. We do have a variety of, of different things happening for the month of April. We partner with the Alamosa School District from K through 5, and we do a poster contest every year, where we have kiddos design a poster with the message about child abuse prevention. And then we pick winners from each grade, first, second, and third. And so we'll be putting up new posters around our community. Please keep an eye out for that, because it's all of our local kiddos and all their hard work, and something they're really proud of. We are also doing a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club on the 19th for their kiddos. They're going to be working on a Safety Snake event. We're going to have a little bit of activities for them, a little bit of education about child safety. So something new that we've never done. We're really excited to do that this year. So we just want to say thank you. As always, we are so appreciative of the community we have. We wouldn't be successful without that support. So thank you again for having us.
Okay, thank you for everything you do, and we'll come down and present this to you, okay? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the introduction of the Alamosa Fire Explorers. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and folks in Zoom land. My name's Bill Stone. I'm the fire chief in Alamosa. And I want to thank the city for supporting this venture. Also thank the Boys and Girls Club and the San Luis Valley RITAC for their support in assisting in various ways. To my right here is Adam Lopez. He's pretty much the lead instructor, and he is doing a tremendous job with these youth. Saturdays, other days, Sundays, various days during the week. And we're very fortunate to have him as a lead instructor. Behind me, and I'll just quickly name them off, and then they can come up, introduce themselves, and I already briefed them that they maybe asked questions. So, so we got Lucia Andres Asinto, Aiden Clark, Christian Wolf, J.J. Williams, Josh Klein, and then not present are Ben Kaiser and Jared Martinez. So I'll let each one of them come on up and talk. But before I do that, I just want to say, they've been attending Saturday morning station duties, learning about the apparatus, where the equipment is placed, how to use it, and then also doing what all firefighters do, shine the engine, right? So they're cleaning floors, shining the engine, and that's, that's just what firefighters do. So no matter what rank you are, ask Adam, I'm out there hosing and sweeping too. It's just kind of a fun thing to do. They also started putting turnout gear on. And when we first started timing them, they were what, around a couple minutes?
Couple minutes, about two minutes.
And, and now we have some individuals who are in the low 32nd range. So they're, they're showing some great progress there. We've gone over a few ropes and knots, but we haven't hit that hard yet, but they're just starting to understand that. Last weekend, they learned about our 102-foot ladder tower, and we got to take them up. Adam took them up probably 80 feet. It was a little windy, so with the wind, the nerves are a little bit, and it's not, we don't want to go too much higher when it's windy. So we did, we've done that. And then we also introduced them to their breathing apparatus. And that's a, that's a gradual thing so that they get used to breathing, because it's a little bit, it takes a little effort to breathe as compared to as we are now. So we're just getting them used to that, and then we had them exercise a little bit so they could get huffing and puffing and get comfortable with it, so that when we start doing tasks, they aren't worried about their breathing, they're focusing on the task. So it's graduated steps of getting them used to these different things. We actually did some push-ups with the gear on, that's probably an extra 40 pounds. And then we did some squat thrusts. And I asked them if they were sore, and they said no. And I said, great, then we'll do more next time, so that way when they come back, we know that we've done what we need to do. So I'll let them come up, but first of all, I'll let Adam say anything if you'd like to.
The other thing we've incorporated is for wildland is running with their pack. They have to do a pack test, so it's three miles, 45 minutes, with 45 pounds on their back. So they've got to experience that once. The goal is they will get to where they meet that time limit. So a lot of them did tell me the next day they were really sore, their backs hurt and everything else, and so it's just a gradual progression so that we show that they're showing improvement. So we're basing the curriculum off of a firefighter one practice, so that way they will understand as at what a firefighter one has to go forward. But we're also looking at, these are kids from all over the valley, not just Alamosa kids. So it's to help the entire community raise the kids up, so that way if this is a career they want to choose, then that is the goal. We've given them a baseline to start, and they could go forward. So I'll let them introduce themselves. Who's first?
Hello, my name is Lucia Andres Asinto. I'm a senior at Alamosa High School.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jaylee Williams, but most people call me JJ. I am a sophomore at Moffett Consolidated, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity that these people have provided me.
Hello, my name is Josh Klein. I'm 17 years old. I'm a junior at Alamosa High School, and I'm just very happy for this opportunity that was given to me.
My name's Christian Wolf. I'm 17, and I attend Goal Academy in Alamosa. I honestly super grateful for everybody. This has been a huge dream for me, my whole life. I grew up around it, and so I am very grateful to have all of them and the opportunity to be a part of this program. Thank you, guys.
Okay, well, chief, chief. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me see.
My name's Aiden Clark, and I'm 14 years old at Ortega Middle School. And I'm grateful for this opportunity, because I've always wanted to do it all through my life, especially when my uncle started doing it. So I'm grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
That is awesome. Well, I'm going to have all you all come closer to the mic real quick, because chief told me that you all are prepared for questions, okay? So at least, I want to see what council members have a question. I see council, I have the, oh, my goodness, you're going to get a lot of questions in life. We'll start down here, make it easy, and go all the way down. We'll start with Counselor Dominguez, and then next, Vehill, and go all the way down.
Congratulations, guys. I want to know what the funnest part and then the hardest part is, and it doesn't matter who answers.
In my opinion, the funnest part is definitely learning the basics of trucks. Maybe that's just from my opinion. The hardest part is definitely the learning part, like the bookwork. To me, it's just learning everything, because then when you, you're at, you know, any task, you all have it in the back of your head of, do I remember how to do this? And stuff like that.
Well, stick with it, guys. It sounds like you got some hands-on stuff, associate and bookwork at the same time? So that's probably going to help a little bit better than sitting in a classroom, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
It's so awesome to see this going, and chief and Mr. Lopez, thank you for, for taking the reins on this. And I'm, I'm a public school teacher, so I teach students your age. It's cool to see, not everybody, so my question is this. Do you all want to do this as a career someday?
Yes.
Yeah. Awesome.
I plan on it being a full, full day.
Nice. Well, this is good to get a great opportunity to get your feet wet and, and that, so right on. Thank you.
Just wanted to say congratulations to all of you. And it's very exciting to see that you are all from different parts of the valley. And just wanted to ask, how is the physical part of it?
So I say the physical part of it is difficult at first, and it is hard to overcome sometimes, especially when you have the extra 45 pounds on and all that. But we're getting, we're working through it, getting better at it, weekend by weekend. So, yeah.
All right.
Well, guys, I'm just going to echo, not just a congratulations, but thank you to you for giving grownups a chance, to show you a possible career path that you never thought in a million years that you would even start to it as where you are right now. So, and I guess my, my one question to you is, have you realized the trainings and the classes and the education around this that you've gone through? Have you seen it impact other areas in your life?
I would say yes. I, most of these, what we learn, I'd say we use in everyday life. So what we learn, we get the opportunity of actually being able to use, and I think that's just really helpful.
And, and all of you, your self-confidence is off, is just off the hook. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm proud of all of you guys. It's very awesome to see people that are as young as you guys, Aiden, super young. I'm sure you didn't want to talk about career choices in front of your pops, so sorry for putting you on the spot. But, uh, very proud of you guys, and congrats on being part of a good program. Chief, Mr. Lopez, thank you as well. Just want to echo what everybody else said. Keep up the good work and... Keep up the good work and take that back to your respective parts of the valley and recruit more kids. We need, we need firefighters. So thank you, guys.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I'll wrap things up. From just watching the way that you all approached the mic, I could see that there's teamwork. It seems like you did a rotation automatically. And that's very important. Teamwork is very crucial when you're working in the fire fighter arena that you're in. So thank you so very much. I have a question, though. Chief mentioned that you all climbed up the ladder. Who went the highest?
Oh, it was not me.
We all stood in the bucket, so I had four individuals that were there that day, and we each went up. So in that front platform, I could only hold a thousand pounds. And with all of us, so it's three in around. But with the winds going as high as it was, I want to say probably eighty, eighty feet, maybe.
Eighty, eighty feet.
Yeah, the tower goes one-twenty. So, but we were still up there, but you could start feeling its sway. So safety first for me. So just keeping them down.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And, and thank you all for your commitment and dedication. And we really look forward to you all continuing to report back and let us know how things are going. Hey, good job. Proud of you. Thank you, Council. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Consent Calendar A, Council reveal.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, awesome. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Regular business presentation from an outside agency. An annual update from our outside funding partner, La Puente. We have Lance Cheslock.
Hello, hello. Can I use this one?
Yes, sure.
Guys, hear me okay? So first a plug, gosh, we live in the most beautiful place you could imagine. And those, the dark skies is just such a great phenomenon. And there is a, it's gonna be a partial eclipse here, but eclipse here on the tenth. And then I just want to shout out to Tucasa. They're great partners, great asset to our community. And those kids are cool. Wasn't that great? Just seeing them up front. So today I wanted to give you guys more of a, just a broad overview of La Puente, not drilling deep into anything, but the kind of a big survey of everything. Maybe starting with some things that I don't traditionally talk about. Our Rural Alliance for Dignity Program, which is the name of a program that recruits young people for a year of service through AmeriCorps. We, we have forty placement sites. Twenty of them are, are at La Puente. And I think you know some folks that have, are still in our community that were recruited long ago. I'm thinking of Erin Minks came through. We all know her. Dr. Mandell, the surgeon at the hospital, Tim Delet, who now works for the city. Allison Cruz Miltonberger, who was at the bookstore, and Erin. And then not here anymore, but John Reeser. But it's a program that, that we, our community really brings great people to our community. And I just wanted to give a shout out to them. We also place AmeriCorps members in other communities like Trinidad, Cortez, Durango, Salida, Buena Vista, Bailey. And that's, that's just in every, because there's, there's smaller nonprofits there that need that resource. So next, the Food Bank Network of the San Luis Valley. Fourteen pantries and last year, four thousand two hundred and eighteen households. That's the unduplicated number received food. And that accounts for nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-two household members, four hundred and forty-five thousand meals. In Alamosa, at the Alamosa pantry, the unduplicated households, over a thousand, one thousand sixty households in our community awaited and got food. That's two thousand two hundred and fifty household members, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand meals. Great folks there, a lot of volunteers. It's a good place to, it's a good place to get involved. We have a building on State Street, but I don't have time for that, but you can ask me that question. Crisis Prevention Resources right now. We, the total households last year that received a service, at least one service from us, is one thousand four hundred and thirty-four valley families. This is eviction prevention through mortgage assistance, rental assistance, utility assistance. These are, these are a lot of dollars that the state and other places provide us, and our AmeriCorps members provide those services. But the amount of individuals that live on the edge, that is a lot of folks. The city helped us in launching our, our employment program. And last year, I have a, in the handout, you can look at that a little more carefully. A hundred and eighteen individuals were enrolled in that that had positive employment outcomes. That's a sixty-seven percent success rate, one of the higher rates in the state. And most of those clients were unhoused or homeless upon enrollment. Our PALS Children's Program works with kids that are in kindergarten through third grade, wanting to expand to fifth grade. And what's hard about that is early childhood resources end right at, after daycare. When you get into kindergarten, those resources are gone. And almost all those kids never got any of those preschools or other services. And so a lot of them have social emotional issues that are really tough. So Don, I can't say this, I can't understand the theory very well, but he uses trust-based relationship intervention. It's an evidence-based practice that is getting incredible results. We've got the attention of the Colorado CDC. Children, Children's Hospital is involved with us. And, and just remarkable turnarounds with, with the children that we're working with. Our primary referral partners are Child Protection Services. It's not, you have to be referred, the Alamosa School District and the Boys and Girls Club. We are hoping to, and working on a new building that will be a home for PALS because right now they're in the basement of the Presbyterian Church. Regarding homeless services, you know, currently our homeless census, and we do this a weekly count. We have thirty-three individuals and family members at the shelter. Thirty-five are out at St. Benedict's. Thirty-one are more randomly on the streets. Nine folks are living in a, in a vehicle. Thirty-eight of the individuals are couch hopping. We don't consider that technically homeless, but those are folks that kind of go in and out of one of those other categories. Desiree Sanchez is our new shelter director, validative, bilingual. We really love her. And I want to say that the number we have right now is a four-year low. It is a four-year low in watching it come down. And a lot of that is because of, of all the partnerships and work that we're doing. It's, I have another way that, to talk about that, but I'll come back to that if I have time. Yeah, shelter barriers, like our shelter is not bent full all the time. And so bringing people into the shelter is becoming the issue. Right now, if you are workforce-ready, your, your stay at the shelter is short because there's jobs. It can be short. If you're not workforce-ready, then, and, and there's addiction or mental illness, there's a lot of extra work that has to happen before you can enter the workforce and, and get into housing. And so that dynamic has changed over the years. Of course, the fentanyl crisis right now really contributes directly to how quickly we can have outcomes. If there's a downturn in the economy, then those that are workforce-ready, those numbers will go up. For our street outreach, Christina Bolt is the new director. She trained under Shanay Diaz, just who is, may, you may remember, just a great person. Christina then went to Durango for a couple of years, got married, was working with street outreach over there. She came back, she came back to then work with La Puente. She has a daughter named Valley, which sort of tells a story about how much she likes the Valley. And, and collectively, those two programs housed a hundred and five individuals into stable housing. And that is really hard work. Those are the ones that are, are super challenging. Our Adelante Family Resource Center, we have twenty-seven units of housing. Those are primarily the starting place for people coming off the streets where then we worked with them in a supportive way to then transition them out later. When we were having the, talking about child abuse, the, one of the comments in that statement was, was teaching protective factors. Protective factors include things like having a parent understand child development, having, working toward understanding what does it mean to be, how do you foster resiliency in a parent? Because if we're all of us parents, now we can go nuts sometimes. And, and what are your natural resources that you go to to foster those sort of things? Understanding that, and then social connections, because isolation is also a very toxic thing for, for families that can lead to child abuse. The Adelante Family Resource Center, among other things, works with high-risk families. And protective factors is one of the first things that we work with them on so that we can reduce that propensity for child abuse. Some of those referrals are those that didn't reach the threshold of investigation at Social Services. But we got the warm handoff to invite people to be part of that process and have had a lot of success. Our Valley Educational Gardens Initiative, pretty cool program. It's been pretty much for all kids. And we believe that hunger is a nutrition problem, not a calorie problem. But we also know that we all reach for food that is not necessarily nutritional. It's what we reach for. Getting in kids' guard, getting kids involved in gardening changes that. It changes what they reach for. It gives them access. We're in the Alamosa Public Schools and really have a good time with that. And our staff are in there giving lessons every week right now on planting and then harvesting later in the fall. And finally, just in terms of La Puente Enterprises, we have been enjoying an uptick in our businesses, in all of our businesses because of the economy in part. And then the work with the State Historic Society that we did a couple of years ago at Malagros, and then more recently in Rainbow's End. So things are going well there. And I did a tally. It's like we average a low between just the two businesses, five thousand. And we go up to eight thousand sometimes receipts a month. That's a lot of retail foot traffic, foot traffic in the downtown, and we're really proud of that. Also proud to say too, that as an organization, we collect sales tax here in all of our enterprises. And I called Rochelle this morning, said, I want to know how much we collected. And so it was a little over seventy-five thousand dollars of sales tax collected. And that's the state and county and city included in on that. And we're having, our store up in center was closed for a while because it was really struggling. And we have some new volunteers and people involved. And we hope, we're gonna have a, we don't hope, but we're gonna have a grand reopening this Saturday. And I'm really excited about that. Last two, I just, I was talking to Jamie about it. We're developing, we have an event that tries to work with children and families to educate them on the cause and effects of hunger, both locally and nationally. And it's traditionally was called a crop walk, where you, where you would walk a mile in their shoes and raise little funds. But we're, we've turned it more into a hunger activity fair that's gonna be at Gold Park that is family-friendly. Most of the activities have been designed by parents who we asked them the question, what would you want to go to and enjoy that would, that you feel your kids would learn something from? And you would leave saying, that was really a good experience. That's gonna be on April twentieth as my last little shameless plug. And I want to thank all of you for your service and our fire marshal for keeping us safe in these crazy windy days ahead when a spark becomes a, something out of control, and for your service.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Excuse me. Counselor V Hill has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Lance, thanks for coming again and giving us an update. And we appreciate all that you do and, and the, the part of the community that you serve. A couple of questions for you, and these are what, what we get from our end, from constituents. And I ask this question to you every year. Can you please, do you, do you promote La Puente outside of Alamosa on the front range and try to get people over here to serve them?
Thanks for asking that, Jan. I, I get, I get asked that a lot. I've been personally seen in Houston, New York, Albuquerque, LA, and then Denver. Nobody's ever got a photo of me, though, even though we all have phones. But of course, we wouldn't do something like that. We have plenty of our own need and wouldn't do that. And it's, when we look, we, we do data. And one of the questions we ask upon intake of everybody that we serve is, where was your last place of residential stability? And it's like either zip code or town. And then we cross-reference that for, like, are you just coming here? Was your last place of residential stability a bar? Or did your homelessness erupt from somewhere in here? And it's around a little bit less than three-quarters of one percent will say someplace outside of the valley. Because it's a small number.
Thank you, Lance. And then about four or five years ago, we were getting a lot of concern from citizens who live around the food bank, the, the shelter, excuse me. Just of the clientele coming in and out and, and the safety of the immediate neighborhood. And, and you all put a plan together to kind of sweep that area around with the shelter and that. Can you comment on that and how that's going? Is that still going on? And maybe talk about the relationship of the shelter with the immediate neighborhood.
I haven't had conversations with a lot of our immediate neighbors, but I also have not been people coming in and complaining in, in quite a while. And our numbers are lower there because our overall homeless numbers, those stats are, are lower. And we spend a lot of time in the camps now, working with folks in that particular capacity. I think it's, it's always gonna be an issue. A lot of people feel like, because the visibility of the, of the homeless who are not workforce-ready, that we're not working with, is, is more visual to folks. And those are the people that we're trying to engage. But oftentimes, we might get, you know, blamed for, for their activities or what's going on. It's human nature to see something and then reach a conclusion without really understanding the full dynamic. Okay. Did I hear you ask something about the food bank, just kind of putting?
That was, that was my last question, is what's going on across the street there from?
Thanks for asking that. We, we just got our sheet rock in, and we're gonna be getting the, it's been great. We've had framing groups, all kinds of groups. I'm gonna need some painters here in a couple of weeks. And, you know, a two-hour stint, maybe a four-hour stint, paintbrush in hand. And not, a lot can go wrong because we don't have the flooring down. We don't have anything like that down. It'd be great to have one or two of you come and show up for a few hours and just paint and help us make that an amazing building. We want that building, people in our neighborhood to be proud of that building when we're done. So we're, we're not gonna open it until we all, till it's fully complete. We think that might be at the end of June. And I would, I just invite you and any other community members to come and pick up a paintbrush and be part of our community.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Counselor Dominguez, and then Counselor Krebs.
Thank you for all that you do. And I wanted to comment on one of your questions. I live like right up the alley from La Puente. And they've done an awesome job, I believe, in the last two to three years. I've seen the traffic slow down there. I know you've got cameras out there now that weren't there, and I think that it's helped a bunch. So thank you for that. The second question I had was, have you seen an uptake in immigrants associated with like asylum-seeking, like in your areas?
Not much. I mean, I, I could say we, if we had like a woman from Venezuela who would be in that classic scenario, and she came, she was an orthodontist. I mean, a lot of these folks are professional, you know, coming, they're educated. She was an orthodontist. She got a job at McDonald's. And after a couple of paychecks, she just said, you know, I don't think I can, this is not my place. I want to be with my people coming in. And so we, we haven't, we haven't seen an uptick. But, you know, we, if someone appears and comes before us or whatever, we have a limited capacity. But our capacity will be to serve people who, anybody that comes to our door that needs services and is willing to cooperate and be involved in our structure and programs.
Thank you, Lance.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dominguez. Next, we have Counselor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, Lance.
Thanks, sir.
Good to have a history lesson on my side. I guess my question is, with the, the new placement of the food bank almost being completed and with Adelante taking one of the buildings over across the street, what are your plans for that building?
For the food bank building?
Yep.
Well, the one side of the building will continue to be, continue to be where our AmeriCorps program is run. And then we have, there's another effort called San Luis Valley Community Solutions, who is working out of that side. It's kind of a secret. We've got some, we've got some plans I don't want to, we have several options kind of going out, but you know how that goes. You don't want to, I'm holding my cards close to my chest on that one. But Don, maybe a cup of coffee, and I'll slip you a note on what might be happening.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Carson?
Lance, thank you for the presentation. Not knocking anything from the past at all, but good job on the, on that building. It looks great. Just the cleanup on it is tremendous. I think just the whole, you know, the whole feel around it is better. So good job. I really, I'm excited. I, I was used to seeing like a lot more weirdness going on in the evenings. You know, you go to altar or something and you'd see it, and it's kind of gone. So good job. I'm, I passed by, and even just under construction, it looks really great.
Thank you. The stucco should start in a couple of weeks. Guys, we're, we're using all local contractors. All of them have dropped prices or have staff that are volunteering doing things. We live in a community that just shows up when you have a need. It's just, it's just amazing. And then you have craftsmen's like, like Stan at Hoist Glass, all those windows. Eric Vanney Warden's gonna be coming in and putting in some really cool metal trim on the top there. And, you know, we just have craftsmen and generous folks. I just, this community gives me goosebumps about who just shows up when you need it. It's, it's amazing.
Good job. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor V, Jackie V Hill?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to make a comment.
Hi, um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I just wanted to make a comment. Like Jamie said, we live in that community by La Puente and I just see how everything has improved. I mean, there's not, it doesn't have like a scary feel to it anymore. And then as far as the new food bank, I think, I mean, just, it, it's really exciting because we don't want like buildings like that to stay abandoned and, you know, just make the neighborhood look bad. And so I applaud you for using that building for the new food bank.
Thanks, Jackie. When you're doing a rehab, it looks like, oh, a square building. We'll just, it's a grocery store. Let's just do it. There's lots of surprises that kind of erupt when you move, move the furniture or you tear stuff up. And so we've had lots of surprises, but we're really committed at making it a very beautiful building, whatever. And I lost, I've lost sleep over those surprises, but at the same time, people have showed up to kind of pop that balloon and help me through it.
Thank you, Counselor Jackie V Hill. Okay, Lance, I'll wrap things up. Thank you and your team for all the services you provide to the people in our community. You're doing a great job. We wish you much success. Keep up the great work. Thank you too, Rachel.
Appreciate all of you.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel. That brings us to the next item. On the agenda, business brought forward by city staff, police, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-four, shortening the cure and notice provision for nuisance properties owned and controlled by resident owners creating nuisances. And that's to our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We went through the background of this at some length on first reading at your last meeting. The, the nutshell version is that when this program concerning nuisance properties was instituted in twenty twenty-one, it, it has now been used a few times and we've realized there are some kinks we want to work out. The big kink is that we have, the times that we've used it, we have dealt with landowners themselves who are causing the nuisance to occur on the property. And when we have a thirty day cure period, when all the cure requires is to stop doing what you're doing, it's just a free thirty days that doesn't make sense. So the purpose of this ordinance is to tighten that up to three days. So that would be staff's recommendation unless something else comes up at the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-four, shortening the cure and notice provisions for nuisance properties owned and controlled by resident owners creating the nuisance. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium to make any comments, please feel free to do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience right now, so we'll go to Zoom. And Ms. Martinez, if you could give instructions of how they can raise their hand to participate in this public hearing?
Yes, sir. If you want to speak for public hearing right now, you use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. And Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, Ms. Martinez. So I'll bring it back to counsel, Counselor V Hill.
Mayor, are you shutting down the?
Uh, yes, I've shut down the hearing and I'm bringing it back to counsel.
Mayor, I move on second reading to approve ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the next item under Parks and Recreation First Reading, ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I haven't been up here in a while, so good to get reacquainted. I'm here to present a first reading of ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four. This sets official hours for parks and open space in the city and prohibits deadly weapons in the parks and parks and rec facilities, among other things. The reason for bringing this forward to you guys is really threefold. One is general safety. Although we haven't had too many violent occurrences in our parks, we know it's better to be proactive. And also when we look at some of the other issues in the parks, like vandalism, setting official hours could help with that from an enforcement standpoint. Secondly, uh, these rules are, should be governed under an ordinance. And so I'm a little embarrassed that maybe I shouldn't have been up here by ten years ago, but traditionally this stuff has been city policy. So we weren't really changing anything. It's really just putting it into an ordinance and getting it before you because I believe it's section five of the charter talks about rules for our facilities and parks can be governed by ordinance by you guys. Thirdly, um, this, this ordinance serves as another tool for law enforcement. It was a collaborative effort to develop this. And it gives them reason to engage folks whether the activity is nefarious or not. It's just another tool for them to keep our parks safe. So general safety. There is some nuances in it, right? Number one, of course, we exempted concealed carry for obvious reasons. We haven't had problems with that. And so we thought that was kind of the prudent thing to do. Exemptions for transient use, like running in the park early in the morning. Obviously, they're not gonna be enforcing that. It's just another tool, as I said before. Exemptions for special events, obviously Summerfest, stuff like that, or exemptions to make minor changes to hours and stuff. So we're not coming back here before you. With questions, certainly I might defer to Sergeant Squires or Counselor Schweisow. There was a lot in that council communication. We put a lot of effort into this. So, you know, I welcome your questions. That was a pretty quick summary. So first reading, let's, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carson.
Um, I, and I, I guess I missed it, but, um, what was the curfew time? What was that?
Previous?
No, uh, like now. What would the new ordinance be as far as nobody in the parks?
The official parks hours would be set to five AM to ten PM.
Okay.
And dog parks and open space and trails would be dust to dawn. Yes.
And my other question was gonna be about the concealed carry, but that's good that you guys included that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Uh, Counselor Krebs?
Um, Liz did raise her hand.
Oh, she did? Okay. Uh, there you go. Counselor Hensley, would you like to make your comment? We see your hand now.
No worries. Um, Andy, just making sure clarification, when you said that there'll be times of adjustment or however you said it. So for example, you said Summerfest. Does that mean then with Summerfest, are you talking about the times or the weapons?
Uh, the times when special events may, you know, go past ten PM mainly for a special concert or Summerfest like that. Yeah.
But it wouldn't make the exception that they still couldn't have the weapons?
No.
Done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I let Liz go and then she took my question. That, that was my concern when there's events in the park, especially those that are renting the park. Will there be a little bit of wiggle room to the tail end of it, especially? I'm thinking like the barbecue fest where you have people in the park overnight doing that kind of thing.
Yeah, definitely. Counselor Schweisow wrote in those exemptions specifically into the ordinance. And certainly this is dealing more with just day-to-day use and enforcement for PD.
And it covers, it covers all parks. I saw the, the attachment. So every park in the city is being touched. I guess, um, my concern, and it's not really concern, it's just an observation, that it looked like there were two slightly important issues getting pushed into the same ordinance. And so, um, that was my only, um, not concern, but you, you see what I mean? It's, we're focusing on both at the same time and I didn't know if one need to be pulled out and dusted off and, and treated as its own or if it's, if it's okay to be in one ordinance when it's two clearly separate issues that, that do, that do coincide, but.
Well, so we don't have a single subject requirement applicable to ordinances, so they do coincide. But if council wants to treat the, pull them off and treat them differently, that's certainly your prerogative. Or if you want to amend the ordinance to drop one of those issues out, that would be your prerogative as well. And let us know at first reading some direction to do some changes and come back for second reading.
Okay. I just, I didn't know the history behind that. So it just struck me as they're, they're both equally important and, but to have them together seemed a little.
Are, are you talking about the hours at the same time as the deadly weapons ban? Yeah. And the reason they're together is that, that as, as Andy pointed out, the charter says that park rules may be, I forget the exact language, something like park rules may be set by council by ordinance, which to belt and suspenders approach means if we're gonna do park rules, really council ought to be approving them. So we're bringing them in front of you and, and the rules themselves encompass both of those items as well as a whole bunch of other stuff.
Okay, all righty. And my, my only other question around that is I noticed reading through this that it is slightly less stringent than the one that potentially the state might put through. If the state puts through something more stringent, do we still have home rule to, to use ours or would we have to go to the state one?
Well, it, it depends upon whether the state declares it a matter of statewide concern. In which case it would trump our rules and also whether the state, as it often does, would provide a carve-out saying local entities may, you know, make exceptions as they see fit. So I kind of have to see how that develops to know whether we would be preempted.
No worries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Andy.
Yep. I'd just like to add that efficiency is also one motivation of bringing them to you together. So, but, yeah.
Let me also, since you asked me a question, I have a little bit of the floor. I just wanted to make clear that when Andy was talking about the discretion for him to make changes to various of the rules like deciding that five to ten doesn't really work. We want to make it six to nine or something like that. The ordinance gives that discretion. It says the director of Parks and Recreation may promulgate amendments to the rules adopted by this ordinance as operational experience dictates. But any amendments that change the ban on deadly weapons or alcohol and illegal drugs is not in his discretion. The change to that effect would have to come before council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Krebs. We have Counselor V Hill and Counselor Carson.
Just a quick question. You talked about, um, working with other groups on this, the police and did you all, surely this also went through the rec board?
Yeah, rec board, uh, definitely went through them and their recommendation kind of was to keep concealed carry provisions and that. And so yes, short answer.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Counselor Carson and Counselor Jackie V Hill.
I was gonna ask a question, but you clarified it, Eric. If there's no more questions, I'll just make a motion. Oh, you have questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jackie. My bad.
I was just wondering, um, how is this gonna affect law enforcement? Is it gonna? I mean, how do you police this? Is it gonna be more for you guys to do to police all the parks in the city?
Right. So it's not, it's, the, the ordinance is not something that we would enforce such as a curfew, right? We're not gonna go around to every park checking to make sure the parks are empty by ten PM. But what this ordinance does is it gives us, like Andy said, it gives us another tool in our belt, right? We need a reason to contact folks. We can't just walk up and make a lawful contact unless we have some sort of violation of law. So if we, if this is a municipal ordinance like it was in the past, that gives us a reason to contact these individuals in the park for no other reason outside of them just being there. So when our officers are driving through the parks at night, like right now I'm on night shift. We, we cruise through the parks often throughout the evening to keep down the vandalism and the illegal camping, stuff like that. It gives us a reason to contact these individuals, not just wave at them out the window and, and see what they're up to. Ask some questions and keep down the vandalism and the sleeping in the parks and stuff like that.
And if I could just say, Sergeant Squires, um, I think sometimes when we get complaints of someone sleeping in the park overnight, we don't allow camping, but what counts as camping versus someone just saying, I'm taking a nap. So it can be a little more complicated for our officers and this just makes it pretty clear that between those hours, you can't even be taking a nap.
Right. And it, and it, like, like you said, Ms. Sanchez, it, it makes us have that power to remove people from the park, whether they say they're camping or just taking a nap or whatever they're doing. Uh, we, it gives us the power to at least stop them, talk to them, identify them, see what they're up to. And then if they are violating the law, remove them from the park and it keeps from the traffic down late at night as well.
Sergeant, your, your mic got switched off if you want to hit that button. Oh.
It's.
Push it down.
Sorry, I'm only a sergeant. I'm not used to talking to city council very often. That's what happens when both of my captains are gone, so.
Okay, so, um, Counselor Jamie Dominguez?
Um, just a real quick question. They're gonna be signage that's posted?
Yes, it's gonna be a pretty big signage effort as we redo this across the city. Um, just waiting on official stuff though before embarking on that, obviously.
With, with a light?
With a light?
With a little light shining on it. Well, it's dark. I didn't see the sun.
That's right.
Okay, we got. Dark, dark skies.
I don't know if you're seeing my hand. Could I add something?
Sorry, yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Hensley.
No worries. I just thought I'd add since it was brought up. Um, so CML, um, it just went through today that it narrowed that uh, potential legislative action. And it's more geared to buildings than it is to parks anymore and it's really narrowed the scope of it. And part of it also has been added to state that it would allow exemption for local governments to choose via ordinance whether to allow open and concealed weapons, et cetera. So they are allowing a little bit more leeway that was just added today. And CML is still neutral on it, but just thought I'd share that since that was brought up.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. We got a Counselor V Hill and Counselor Carson.
One more question and you, you alluded to it earlier, but just, I think of all the runners that we have in our town. And if we're saying dusk till dawn on the open space in the ranch and the dyke, I'm sure there's gonna be some leeway. If, if there's a group of Adam State runners going at the crack of dawn, we're not gonna say, hey, get, get off the dyke, right? Yes, sir, Counselor V. Just like any other ordinance, the officers will have discretion. Officer discretion will dictate, you know, if we see folks running, we know what they're doing. Um, we, we're not gonna contact you if you're recreating. If you, if you're playing football at ten oh one, we're not gonna ask you to leave. You know, if you're using our parks for the correct reasons, we're, we're gonna use our discretion just like we do on our everyday job. So I, I wouldn't think there would be any issue with runners on the trails or anything like that, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson.
Motion, um, if there's no more questions that we approve on first reading ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four, um, approving official hours for public use of city Alamosa Parks and Open Space and prohibiting deadly weapons in all parks, open space and recreation facilities. And set it for public hearing, um, on April seventeenth or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to, um, council, I mean, sorry, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Okay, Counselor Krebs?
I have three committee reports. They all hit within days of each other. So just the way the month fell. Um, for the Alamosa Senior Center, they met on March twenty-first. The ladies tea has been scheduled for. The ladies tea has been scheduled for, that was scheduled for April, has been moved to May. But they are having a spring fling on April twenty seventh from eight to five with vendors coming out and everything. So that should be fun. The Alamosa Library Board met March twenty sixth. They're saying goodbye to one of the librarians. They're retiring this week, uh, Jane. And meanwhile, they're also welcoming their new outreach assistant to, to kick off the, the summer. And we also got a sneak peek at the summer reading program, and it's just as amazing as it has been in the years past, so I'm very excited to see that. And I believe Foam is involved, so. Um, then my last meeting was with the Creative District Committee, met March twenty eight. And we're still, um, formalizing the process for the Creative District and the details behind that, but we had a little bit of fun. We were able to look over the, all the submissions for the art fest. And why, while we won't vote on them, we do have a, a separate jury that votes on them. Um, we were able to go through and, and pick out the ones that weren't large enough. They didn't meet the parameters of the request, of the art request. But we got to see them all, so there's some amazing artwork coming our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs. Do we have, have any other committee reports? No? Okay, we'll go to staff announcements. Ms. Sanchez, do you have any staff announcement?
Mayor, it's my understanding that we do not.
Okay, all right. That brings us down to, uh, council comments. We have any, Councilor Veho?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm gonna, I got, I got some, uh, I had two folks in the Washington area. And I'm gonna talk to Harry about this after the meeting, just because they're gonna shut down Washington next week. Um, and I had some concerns from some folks about who live on West Seventh. How about their, how they're gonna get in and out? If the roads closed and what the city can do to communicate to them how to get in and out of there once that road is shut down. So I think Harry will let, let, let us know and, and that, so. Thank you.
All right, okay, Counselor, uh, Veho, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am just doing a plug for Water Week and just looking over all the things they have planned next week. There's something going on almost every single day, and it looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun for education and the kiddos and everything. So I know I'm gonna be at a couple of them. You use the magic word trivia. So, you know, I'll probably head out for that one. But yeah, I just urge the public, the more that you learn, the more that you can understand the importance of it, so. That's all I have.
Okay, um, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and, uh, wrap up, um, the, uh, council comments. I just want to send a shout out and a thank you to, uh, uh, Ms. James and Deacon today. Uh, we had some visitors come from Boulder County, um, all the way from Boulder area and with the Housing Authority to see how our operations work in the city when it comes to all of the things that we're doing to address housing, um, in our community. It was really impressive, um, when they left today, um, uh, Rachel and, and Deacon took them on, I think it was close to a four-hour tour, including Don Milgaris of the different properties and the different things that we're working on in, in the city. And I could tell you, we could have probably went another hour uh, with all the projects that we're working on, but I'm so proud of Rachel and, and Deacon uh, for the hard work and the dedication and the commitment that they put into that tour today, educating those people about some of the things we're doing. And, uh, more, we were, we were, had a little wager on if Rachel was gonna deliver tonight while we were in council uh, with all that walking we had her do, but so far, she's still doing okay in the back.
Mayor, you have Counselor Hensley with her hand up.
Counselor Hensley, go ahead.
Sorry to go after you. Um, I just wanted to remind people that Saturday, uh, is, uh, where we're going to, uh, color in the numbers for all of the murals that are over, um, by the train station. And so it's from ten to three, I think it is. So if people could please come to that, uh, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun and obviously to put your mark on something that'll be a permanent part of Alamosa.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay.
And Mayor, sorry, I, I just wanted to tag on to, to Liz's comment that it is First Friday. And I do think we have a downtown business that is opening for the first time on Friday. So um, I think they've got souvenirs and fudge and it looks really cool on Facebook. So I just wanted to remind everyone when it is First Friday and, um, it's, we love our National Park celebration kickoff, as well as we've got a downtown business opening. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everyone, so. Uh, Liz, uh, Counselor Hensley, what time is the painting from ten until?
Ten till, and I don't have it in front of me. It's either two or three.
Okay, all right, thank you. All righty, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.